So this work session is to introduce the budget so we can start planning on what we're gonna do. The first two sheets are kind of misleading, so you can look at them later, but it's all of the funds from the city, and it makes us look pretty good. The problem is, if you take out the water and sewer, everything, if you take out the funds that aren't available for other purposes, you end up with an operating budget that comes out of the general revenue, and that's where we've got difficulties. So the third sheet is kind of the beginning of the problem. You can see that we've estimated just a slight increase in the total revenues. Our sales tax has not rebounded substantially, although we still think it will continue to climb a little bit. And so our total revenues without any other source of funding being identified is $1,595,061. This is the last year that we can make a transfer from the original TIF. And so in budget year 2015, there won't be a transfer. So we'll have $91,000 coming in from the TIF. And we are carrying over from this year's operating expenses into general revenue $400,000 in cash. So the total money that we'd have available to spend, if you wanted to spend all your cash, which I'm not advising, would be $2,086,000. So basically, and then we'd leave our CDs in place. Of the departments that rely on the general fund, we have $1,947,952. Now, the difference, which I calculated one time, is 200...
$261,000. We'd have to spend of the $400,000 cash carryover.
Just to maintain the current level of service, and there are no street improvements at all in this number.
What number?
$261,000. Do you want to pay?
Yeah.
What page is that on?
So...
It's like the difference between revenues and the expenditures.
Well, I'm kind of following that, so I'm trying to see where all this is at.
That's spent $261,000 of $400,000.
Of the $400,000 cash carryover.
So I met with Dave, and we've gone over kind of possible street projects and what priority they are. I know I've talked to some of you about specific projects. We talk every year about Point Base. These dollar estimates come from the unit prices that Jokers just used to bid Portus Street a month ago.
Now, third, who came up with these streets? Third between Galvory and Market Street, that's not a bad street.
Okay.
I mean, that's...
The Public Works Director is the one who is making the recommendation.
I mean, if...
There's a big, well, the paving surface is okay, but there's a big storm pipe that goes under it that's sinking. So this would be a replacement of that storm pipe. Because it's, we're trying to, we keep filling it in, and it keeps collapsing.
Were we gonna try doing a chip and seal in this year?
We didn't have in the budget this year for chip and seal. Portus took pretty much our public works budget this year. So what we're here to do is not to kind of go over the individual items, just kind of go over the overall budget, and then to decide on what schedule you'd like to interview the department heads about their budgets. And you'll take each of these packets for the department that you're meeting with, and we can go over each line item. But you need to be doing that with the knowledge of what our overall position is relative to anticipated receipts and available cash. Now, I, you know, Parks always wants to, like, do something big, so we kind of went through, and it didn't include the $200,000 or the $100,000 that Darren would like to rebuild the tennis courts. Love to rebuild the tennis courts.
It's not in there.
It's not in there. There is, we did ask the park board to come up with a priority of the projects that they would like to see, and the one that they asked for above all else would be completing the Main Street Park improvements. That money isn't here. So I got a couple of notes I'd like to discuss with you about some of the items that are on here on the individual sheets, just again, so as you're reviewing this, you know what we're talking about. To go to page 10. This isn't a major amount of money, but Brenda has put some money in for professional services and special services. Basically, it's at 600 and 300, and it relates to surveying some of the buyout property. The property boundaries have been obscured a bit, and so there's some uncertainty about where some of these lots stop and where they start, who's responsible for what. So she's asking that we be able to do a bit of surveying.
And what's the survey gonna do?
Reestablish the property corners.
For what reason?
To determine where our obligation to maintain it stops and somebody else it starts.
Wouldn't you just get the property description?
Well, you still have to identify in the field. It'll field stake it.
I'm just, I mean, I'm just...
You're setting survey marks out is what you're doing.
Yeah, and you're just finding the corners.
Did you hear that, Carl?
But couldn't we just do a little discussing with, whoever owns the property, and we don't need to spend the money on surveying?
Well, let's talk with Brenda about it when she gets here.
It's like me and my neighbors, you just mow whatever and just...
It's upper property she says that it's, she's having difficulty with. And it was probably property owners who were disagreeing with us.
Is that good news?
Hmm?
I said you got good news.
No, I'm just saying that I can't see spending money when you can, I think somebody, there's some common ground somewhere, I feel. You know, maybe if she can't handle it, maybe we need to have a mayor, somebody go try talking with somebody, maybe you.
The board. Yeah, I think you may, I don't know the specific property, so we're gonna defer to her when we're meeting with her.
When they bought that, when they bought those properties out, they should've...
We have legal descriptions.
Yeah, they should've set pins, though.
Yeah, he's got a fine.
There's pins in there from...
Survey pins don't always survive free stall cycles and other activities.
I mean, that's fairly recent, though, for surveying, when the levy went in, you know. There should be metal, magnetic pins everywhere.
Well, that may be $1,000 we don't have to spend. The, you'll notice on the page 13, this is the police budget, you'll see an expenditure for firearm supplies and another one for evidence supplies that are higher than they had been in previous years. It's something they have to do, according to Eric, and you can talk to him more about it when he's here, that's an every four-year expenditure for firearm supplies. And you notice that there really wasn't anything this year, wasn't very much the year before, but the year before that, they spent $6,900. Same thing with evidence supplies. It's something you have to replenish every couple of years. At the bottom, you'll notice a reduction in some items. They didn't actually reduce, we're just allocating them, the costs were all in the police budget, and so that $4,000, $1,000 of it got allocated to judicial supplies, so it'll, it shows up in the judicial budget. He's budgeted on the next page, 14, $2,400 for MDT air cards. We have them, but they were provided and purchased under a grant. And so now, if we want to continue to use them, we're gonna have to pay the annual fees for the use of the air cards. And that's what allows those, you know, that's the...
Do they share internet with us?
No, they have their own internet. The, he's got $49,504 in there for one vehicle. I know we're gonna have some discussions about vehicle purchases. The $12,000 is to replace the car cameras. And again, I'll have him explain why the replacement is necessary, but the cameras we have are malfunctioning, and the company that provided them is not doing well financially, so we may not be able to get them fixed. But he thinks he may be able to get a grant for that. So we're budgeting it, but he's looking forward to seeing if he can't get a grant to cover The fire department budget, there's nothing special in it. Mick will be here to talk to you, but they're actually budgeting $1,000 less than they did On page 17, the Welcome Center. The major difference here is that Sandra's requesting that Megan, the qualified and competent part-time person she have, go full-time. So that's, she can talk about why she thinks that is a good thing, but that's the major difference in expenditures. And that's that going from, to $78,000 to $88,000 on salaries. And not only does it then increase salaries, but you know, you got full-time, you got workers' comp, and the loggers, they all kind of get kicked up when you add a full-time person.
Sure there is my, you got a title in there?
Trip one.
You got a title in there for the employee insurance?
Yeah, it's like $27,000.
Huh.
Why is it so high?
It's $9,000 to $27,000.
To add family?
$20,000?
Just figured that out right. It's 12,000.
That's a big difference.
Same with retirement.
1,200, the premium is 1,200, about, for one full-time person?
So we're covering her whole family?
Twelve times.
We're covering, we're covering Brenda, or...
It's only $14,000, though.
Okay. So that'll be adjusted?
Yeah. Probably not by much, though. She should have a family, and then the other one...
By $14,000.
$800 is, it'd be, it's gonna go down to like $21,000. That'll be for a family, and then the other one's a full child.
So we're covering Stephanie at $9,275, but you're projecting an increase in...
We increased all the insurances by 10%, just in case.
Just in case. We don't have our insurance quote yet.
But still, that's high, really high. It should be about $21,000, and I'll fix that.
So we cover her and her family?
Does she have children that would fall underneath it? I thought she said all of hers were gone.
Who? Not Sandra, it's, Megan, if you added Megan.
Oh, okay.
And Sandra has family.
Yeah. She covers her husband. She doesn't have any children at all.
Right.
Okay. Hmm? Well, I think you still have to cover a spouse. It'd have to be family.
Employee spouse. There's like a break.
Is there?
Yeah.
Well, maybe she has a children.
Oh, no, I'll look into that, though, and get you guys a track number.
Okay, under the transportation trust fund, a couple of things stood out. This is on page 21. Mosquito chemical budget went down, and it's because the cost of the chemicals went down. We're getting a better price now than we were getting before. Not that we're gonna do less. You see a $18,000 line item for building repairs and maintenance, when we are basically gonna spend six or seven. And that's to, the heating and air conditioning in the building is not functioning, and so that would be to replace the HVAC system. The public works building, the shop in the office. On the next page, he's got a $1,500 expenditure for a computer. He's got the oldest computer in the city, and it isn't functioning well, so he asked for one of those. Now, the $80,000 is equipment purchases. He's budgeted a used dump truck.
Can we just get a dump truck?
Two shredders and a used pickup. He understands it's just a request. I explained the realities to him, as I had to everybody I've talked to.
Do they change their own oil?
Yes.
Something you might think about in a furnace is getting an oil furnace.
Now, we don't service the city's fleet, the police department vehicles, take them in.
So a used dump truck, a new dump truck?
But if we have used, if we did, though, we would probably benefit from taking over, changing that, those spools as well.
On this, on down here, up underneath that $18,000, building equipment repairs, is that right?
Right.
And then it's got $9,000? Did he say what that was for? See it right below it?
The equipment repairs, we'll see, 18.
Yeah, and then the building...
Building was nine.
Nine.
Okay, then I said it wrong.
Yeah, yeah.
I got it backwards.
What equipment is he, is that where he's at?
All of our equipment. The repairs?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I've seen some of the spreaders there, and they patched them together pretty good there, they're pretty thin.
And then finally, is that $28,400 on page 29, that's the Parks budget? I said finally, I think I just found those. That's that, the main street, that, putting in lights, benches, sidewalks, and finishing the landscaping.
What page is that?
29.
29. Now, you recall, I'm on the waterfront now, page 31. You recall when we adopted a rate change for water and sewer, and there was a pro forma that we reviewed that showed what we would need to do with rates on an annual basis in order to meet our consent order obligations. That's the CMOM. And so we went ahead and put in the rate adjustment that we discussed at that time. So for water, it's 4%. And for sewer, it's 5%. Water's on page 31. And sewer, for some reason, doesn't come next, it comes last.
42.
And the sewer is on page 42. You'll also notice as you're going through the water and sewer budget, there's a substantial balance at the end of operations. And that's funding the capital improvement schedule to which we committed. You know, we're trying to get to where we build up a reserve, because we're supposed to have, I say we're supposed to have, it is advisable to have a cash reserve to cover the most expensive thing that you have that could, you could lose. So that would be a water tower, in our case. And so we're trying to build up a cash reserve in the water and sewer fund that will allow us to have the funds available to make a major repair if we had a catastrophic failure. It wasn't a result of an act of God that would be covered by insurance. So other than that, I think we've covered all the kind of special notes that I've made along the way. And the question that we need to address is, what kind of schedule would you like to start meeting with department heads? We need to have, what were you... Some meetings for that.
Hello.
Good evening.
It's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8.
Okay, so we got eight departments.
We've got four areas under from the department heads.
And...
For the budget.
If we did, I don't think we want to have any different meetings. If we did two at a work session, that'll give you a half an hour per department. Do you think that's sufficient? Some of them, you don't even need a half an hour.
I think that would certainly handle several departments, but I think there might be a couple that would probably need to go longer.
Is there three you can squeeze in to...
Well, I mean, we can do, I think police, for instance, you'll probably want the whole hour.
And streets, the whole hour.
That's two meetings. Brenda and Welcome Center, you could do in half an hour or less. So that would be three.
And Fire Department's not asking for...
Fire Department issues, yeah, the operating budget isn't the question for the Fire Department. It's the equipment needs. So there really isn't much in the Fire Department budget, except for pretty much continuing to operate as they operated in the past. So we could probably do Fire and the General Fund together. Who am I missing?
We're in the Deer, Police, and Streets Park.
Well, can we do...
We're gonna do Police and Streets in separately.
Well, oh, not on one night, two nights.
Two nights.
Okay.
What if we did a two-hour work session?
We could do a two-hour work session. You could have a special meeting, I mean, we don't have to do them before the...
Right. For twelve, thank you.
You're missing Park and Alliance.
What about two, what about two special meetings? Can we do all in four hours? Would you rather do that?
We need to do that.
That's what they're trying to figure out.
I mean, we can do it like this, an hour before regular meeting, or we can do about two, four, one night, twice.
Our next meeting's the eighth. We have to have a budget by the end of September. It requires two readings, you can't do them on the same night, so we have to decide it by the end of August, or by the end of the first week of September.
As far as I'm concerned, you just schedule them, and everybody that can be there will be there, and somebody that has work or other things that can't be there, they can't be there.
Could you, I'm curious, who is under last year's budget and significantly, I don't care to talk to them, you understand what I'm saying? I want to talk to people that are over budget.
What you got? I mean, yes, I understand what you're saying. And I don't disagree with that necessarily, except that if you're going to establish the priorities for spending, you know, the fact that somebody didn't budget anything extra doesn't mean they can't do without something they're spending, so you can do a road project. Because right now, there's no money in the road projects. So if we want to do any of those, or anything else, we're gonna have to decide from what budget it's going to come.
Well, I'm not saying that I am not gonna listen to what they've got to say, but I'd like, you know, worst first. If they're over budget, I want to talk to them, I want to start with that. If they're over budget, I want to talk to them, I want to start with the, with the ones that are significantly over budget.
Not only significantly over budget, we just have less revenue. The General Fund, the one that's significantly over budget is, is the General Fund. Which would be Eric and Fire.
Welcome Center.
Welcome Center and the Office.
Building.
Building, yeah, but they're not over building. But, uh, the, the ones that are funded, you know, like the Transportation Fund and, you know, the special funds, the water and sewer rates, they're paying for themselves. Except, again, if you want to do any public works projects, we're gonna have to transfer from the General Fund to cover. We can do it, they just down, I mean, I'm more concerned tonight about when you want to meet. And then we can talk about who, who on, on any given night.
I think that we should just schedule, schedule the meetings and schedule one wrap-up meeting for the things that are gonna go long, you know what I mean? If we can't get something done in an hour, one final meeting to catch all those loose ends. Uh, 'cause I would imagine there'll probably be a few topics that will be more discussed than others.
Well, and, yeah, I mean, I, no question about that.
But, I mean, the bottom line there is if, uh, we have good information to, to look at when we come in, we should have our questions established so we can be efficient in our meetings, instead of having a roundtable discussion where we go around the week three or four times on the same thing. I think that's really the, how we can have an effective meeting and be efficient in our time.
And the other thing, as Teddy did last year a couple of times, 'cause it was just kind of, was it your, just, you know, two years? He came in a couple of times and said, could you explain this to me? And he didn't, I explained it to him and he didn't have to bring it up in a meeting, so it just kept the meeting from, from going on. So don't hesitate if you have a question that you think I, I can answer, to call.
I don't care if we have to, if we try to squeeze two in a week. I mean, there's, there, I mean, everybody has work schedules and things that might get in the way, but it's certainly not something we can rush through. It's too important to gloss over some of the stuff.
Okay, so, uh, what do you want, Wednesday and Thursday next week?
Wednesday and Thursday next week?
Wednesday might be tough for me, I'm, I got a work project that's just outrageous right now. So all I can do is be here every time I can.
Have a meeting.
And so we have to have two readings before?
We can't do a double.
The eighth of?
Well, I say you can.
When do we have to have the two meetings?
Maybe we can, but we don't want to.
Thirty-first?
As a, as a policy matter, yeah, you want, you. So, what's your pleasure again? Seventh and eighth, or no, seventh, not seventh, eighth, the next one.
The thirty-first.
Thirty-first and first? Do we need to?
It's like Wednesday and Thursday.
I don't know, how are Thursdays, uh, what about the, the next two Thursdays? Which would be the?
First and the eighth?
Yeah, it's, that's this meeting.
Well, we could do it the hour before, I mean.
Yeah.
Well, an hour would be enough for the small department.
Could you schedule like one before and one after?
Yeah, we could always go after. And you're only limited by your ability to stay awake.
We will get an agenda on a budget work session.
Now, we could do one, you know, I don't foresee the agendas being all that full.
I mean, all the agenda's gonna say is discuss the budget.
No, I mean, even our regular agenda, you don't know, you don't know whatever comes up, I mean, tonight, we could have, unless something comes up in the meeting, you never know, you think you have a short meeting and make the last couple hours, but tonight's meeting doesn't have a lot on the agenda, so you could do an hour before and an hour after if you wanted to, still get out of here by nine o'clock.
I'm good every Wednesday and Thursday night from now till September. She can't be here the eighth.
Well, what about next Thursday and then the eighth? We'll do the eighth, we'll do one before and one after.
Okay.
We'll do that?
You won't have, if it doesn't work afterwards, we'll just have to reschedule.
Yeah.
You won't have Sue on the eighth, but we can trouble her, we'll tell you what we do.
We got your phone number.
We'll put you on speaker.
Phone rings.
Okay, so the first and the eighth?
The first and the eighth?
And the eighth, you want to do before and after, everything?
Yeah, let's do that.
Six P.M. on the first, what are we doing on the first?
At six, okay.
On the first, let's push it back so Linda can get here.
I can't at the first.
No, at all.
We hear the eighth.
Is it?
Oh, it is, yeah, it is.
Okay, let's, let's try to.
This is ridiculous. Though, though DARTs have counted, who can be here can be here. I don't know how else you can do it.
Yeah, that's kind of, you just schedule it.
The first is at six and the eighth is at?
If you can't be here and it's important, we can leave a list of questions.
Midnight?
Each other or somebody, I don't know.
I can do the thirty-first, everybody can do the thirty-first. Who can't do the thirty-first, Tom can't do the thirty-first.
Why not?
Next week.
Next Wednesday? Wednesday, Thursday.
I can do my best to be here on the thirty-first.
All right, we're gonna schedule one at six-thirty on?
Thirty-first, six-thirty?
And not do the first?
Not to get, not to get. That's probably pretty.
Sure to fat meeting before, month before sure to fat.
Week before.
Or a week before.
You're gonna do the thirty-first and the eighth, is that what you said?
Thirty-first and the eighth will be before, an hour before, and however long you want to meet after.
And thirty-first is six-thirty?
Six-thirty.
Pizza here at eight o'clock.
And ten.
And, uh, yeah.
Then what?
That's when the beer pressure's up.
And, uh.
Pizza beer, ten.
And then we're gonna shoot for the, the. Another meeting on the next week?
We can discuss it at that point, too.
We just did the eighth, right.
So you just want to do thirty-first and the eighth? Then go from there? And anybody has any questions?
Yeah, we will do that. And then let's tentatively set one for eat, for the fifteenth? Let's see if we can't finish them by any.
Eliminate about seventy percent of grass on the plant, native Missouri wildflowers.
How much is that going to cost to plant?
Martin should be able to tell us how much it costs first we're put to mow.
Catch the fifteenth? One on the fifteenth?
A one on the.
Tentative.
Six-thirty on the fifteenth.
And, and have mop paths.
That's Thursday.
Signs out, this is what this stuff is and that stuff.
Oh, like a walk?
Timbers the park is unusable, unusable.
So the thirty-first is at six-thirty, the eighth before and after, starting at six? And then the fifteenth, ten, please, at six-thirty?
That frisbee thing's just nuts. We need to get past that. Parks and Parks always the first thing, it takes a big step every step.
We'll do the hard.
It's the west side, it's the east side.
The one with that one up.
I have looked it down, do the orders to justify it, I mean, I think we can get seventy percent of that. It's just not usable, slopes and.
I want to take a five, two, ten-minute break.
So if you determine that.
Alderman Zerlin, here. Alderman Couch.
Here.
Alderman John Stevie.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Don Stewie.
Here.
Alderman Openfield.
Here.
Alderman Burnfield. And we have a forum.
Thank you, approval agenda, show move. All in favor? Okay, Martin, I guess where do you?
Okay, more into continuing story of Porter Street. The engineer has not begun the work. Still hasn't committed to a construction start date, but they did order all of the stormwater piping, 'cause that has to be fabricated for the job, and it has been delivered, so there's a, a light at the end of the tunnel, so to speak. You know, we can't, we can award a contract and tell them when, when they have to finish, we can't tell them when they have to start, so, uh, it's kind of up to them to, to schedule the work, but we tried, I talked to the engineer today and he tried to call in to see if, and he did call in and talk to the superintendent, but the owner wasn't there, so he didn't get back to me before the meeting tonight, so hopefully I'll have more information on that tomorrow. The tree committee met, we scrolled around downtown, looked at all the trees, got the advice of the extensions, Katie with the extension office and Tom with the, uh, the certified arborist with Citizens Electric and talked about whether we should try and put trees back in the street or not, and whether we can move them back onto private property, and we talked to one of the property owners who was out while we were wandering around and saying, you know, if the city's gonna buy a tree and put it in your yard where it's more likely to grow than if we try and make it grow in the middle of a sidewalk, would you go along with that? He said, sure, just show it to me, tell me what you're gonna do. So, uh, I think where we can, what we'll try and do is get the trees off the sidewalk into the private yards where people will accept them, and, and then they would be close enough to provide the shade and, and add to the streetscape, and it's a, it's a better alternative than us trying to force trees to grow where they, they aren't gonna do well. I learned a lot in this little tour. I've heard from some property owners and citizens who's saying, why do you plant such small trees? And, uh, and, and the, uh, arborist said, and well, both of them said, you want to plant the smallest tree you can. Said the trees planted as saplings will adapt and grow, and a tree that's been raised in a root ball, uh, really needs to extra care in order for it, it to thrive. And then they turned me on to this, uh, nursery out in Ellsbury that has a special root preparation process, and so as we're going up, down this road, they're gonna kind of advise us as to what species need to go where and, and, and where's the best place to get them so that we have a best chance of survival. I'd like to report that we met today with Union Pacific, representatives, representatives of Berlin Northern San Francisco Railroad, uh, Mississippi Lime representative was here, the newspaper was here, Ron Inman from the Port Authority because of the operation of the ferry was here, and the two railroads said, we are going to solve that problem. And they committed to solving it. We agreed to get the permission of the private property owner through whose property the drainage would need to.
What problem?
Oh, I'm sorry, the, the, it's on the next paragraph, the, the water not draining out of North Maine. And, and, you know, it's been a problem for a long time, but now the pipes are completely clogged. So, that little microburst we had come through here last Saturday ended up closing North Maine for six hours. The City Lime workers got stranded, the ferry had to close down because there wasn't any place for the people to go when they brought them across the river. They lost a thousand, fifteen hundred dollar worth of revenue and we lost visitors. So it, it needs to be solved.
And that's all north of the gates.
Not north of the gate.
There's like a little place right there.
There's three culverts that go either under the road or under the rail, depending on which side of the road you're draining, but on the bluff right below Inman's house, there's one. There's that one, you can see the concrete inlet, and then there's one, a small one, down closer to the, the ferry landing. The problem is, you can clean them out, but the drainage way that needs to be there for them, for the water to get to the river has silted in over the years and nobody's been maintaining it. Now, when that property was being farmed, the farmer was keeping, keeping it clear and, and the drainage was, was open, but since he stopped farming and a couple of floods and a couple of beaver dams and, all of a sudden, you don't have anywhere for the water to go. And they're gonna have to get an excavator in and pull a ditch, and they're gonna have to get a drainage easement, and we're not exactly sure who owns what.
How far up past the gates is that?
The first one is?
Is it along the bluff there?
Along the bluff, the first one.
Because that bluff, it's been known that, um, there's a cave up underneath that bluff, and that's like a historical, not marked historical, but that was part of the underground road where they used to hide the slaves. And there's actually steps that go.
There used to be houses up against that bluff, there used to be people that lived in houses that were built into that bluff right there.
That don't affect drainage, though.
No, but, I mean, if they go in and tearin' that up.
It's gonna open up the drainage pipes and go on the.
And there's usually water up in the cave.
They're gonna be repairing pipes that are already there.
Right, right. Well, the pipes, actually, there's nothing wrong, we can't see anything wrong with the pipes, you're just gonna have to jet them out.
Jet them and?
And then, and then, then pull a ditch out to the river so they can, so they can drain. Mr. Bruggeman is the representative of the investors who are buying the Built Best Building, and I put an I in Built Best, I know that's a mistake. The, uh, we met here, I committed to him, uh, what we talked about. And that is that we would use our backhoe and we would use our dump trucks to load out some of the, the waste that can be taken to the waste transfer station. The guy from CWI looked at it and said, as far as he's concerned, it can all come to the waste transfer station. The Special Road District has agreed to provide trucks when we're doing that so that we don't end up with, uh, the operator sitting there, you know, loading for ten minutes and waiting for thirty minutes. So with the Special Road District, larger trucks, our smaller trucks, it really shouldn't take very long to haul that stuff out, and he was, he was appreciative of that. Mississippi Lime is organizing a community advisory panel. They contacted people who, from the community, me and Eric in particular, from City Hall, and have asked us to sit on a panel that will meet, uh, three or four times a year, maybe. The stated purpose of which is to advise Mississippi Lime on what they can do to be better corporate citizens. So I'm looking forward to having that opportunity.
That's, that's, that's a good thing.
And, and, and I would be happy to receive any input from you, do you think, the issues you think I, I should bring up. John's already informed us to keep an eye on the problem with the trucks queuing in the morning and in the afternoon, so that's something we'll, we'll talk about when we're there with him.
Maybe adding?
Fire tag participation.
Maybe adding a turn lane?
That's, yeah, that's one of the things that we're talking about, fire tag participation. So give it some thought and let either Eric or me know, uh, if, if there's something you think is special.
And see if they'll donate some property to divert the buses straight out, you know where they own that property in this, but?
That'd be great.
Right?
Yeah.
I mean, even.
We'll make, we'll make your big list.
No, but that makes sense, that's safety, that's a safety thing.
What, where?
Okay, Buck, help me out.
Oh, Maple Street, yeah. We weren't talking about that.
Shoot it straight out Maple Street to sixty-one and divert some of those buses for safety reasons.
It wouldn't be straight, it'd be close.
Close. Well, and it reduces stress in town.
The final thing I want to talk to you about is, uh, we, we are insured now by a Missouri Public Risk Pool. It's a not-for-profit company and we are members, they don't have any stockholders. And so we and a number of other municipalities across Missouri are part of this, this pool. I met today with the, the, the risk analyst, and he's given me some good ideas of things that we should do, like make. should do, like to make sure everybody wears their belts when they're in city vehicles, seat belts. As we were driving around town, saying, hey, you know, I saw a couple of city vehicles while we were on our tour, and they didn't have their seat belts on. They're supposed to. He said, well, you need to come up with a way to make sure they do. And he's right. We need to do that. But, you know, things like don't talk on your cellphone while you're in a moving vehicle, and, you know, it's common sense stuff that we all know, but people forget it unless you pay attention to it, and they know you're paying attention to it. So I think they've got a good program, and they've got online educational resources for us, and I was very impressed. That's it.
Any questions? Okay. Go to the staff report. Sandra, you're on the list first.
That's a pretty data.
And you have this from her also.
Yes. Okay. Well, since the last time I talked to you, I think I was on the job maybe 72 hours at that point, so it's been 30 days now. And I was telling someone the other day, I had this 30-day plan, 60-day plan, 90-day plan, and, you know, about half the things that I've done in my first 30 days were not things that I, were part of my plan. So, but on the plan, I have been meeting with festival committees, Jour de Fête committee, of course, and offering our support to them, making sure that the Welcome Center is prepared to assist them and make sure that everything goes just great with the opening ceremonies. And also, I've put a call for volunteers who are interested in dressing in period costume and strolling the streets for Jour de Fête. We'll have sort of a headquarters at the Welcome Center, and I know years ago, they used to do this, so we're sort of revitalizing that tradition. And I know it, if you can, especially at least a couple or a few couples want to get together and do it, or even a group of girlfriends that want to get together and do it, it can really be a lot of fun. And I plan on doing short shifts, so if there's anyone out there who's interested, please call the Welcome Center at 883-7097, and just let them know to put your name down on our list of volunteers. We've already had a few people call in as a result of either seeing it in the paper or possibly, maybe they saw the Tourism Advisory Council meeting on Channel 7 the other day. So with that, I've also been working with the St. Genevieve Downtown Renewal Program, and I'll be telling you a little bit more about that in a moment. In front of you, previous to the meeting, you had a map. This is a project that was ongoing, and we're working hard to bring it to closure in time to have these up and posted for Jour de Fête. This map has, as you can see, not every single thing downtown, but it has the highlights. It has where you can hit the ATM, where are the public restrooms, where are the tour homes and major landmarks. So this will be about four feet wide and three feet tall. I'm looking at Dave because they built a very nice shelter that will be set up with this map in it down in front of the courthouse lawn, and then there'll be a smaller version of it, maybe two foot by two and a half feet down on the bulletin board in between the restrooms at Main Street Park. So this should allow, yes. This should allow our tourists, as they're going around town, in case they haven't been to the Welcome Center already, they can kind of get their bearings and figure out where they are and where they might want to go, and of course, it points out where the Welcome Center is.
This is a combination of the two maps, so that's why there's two "You Are Here" dots on it.
Correct.
There won't be.
Correct. This is, this is actually a hybrid of the two.
Except only schizophrenics can use this.
Thank you. That's a good point. Okay. So the other packet that I handed out, this is our data for the month that ended, June 30th, in most cases. Some of our sales, we turned in through June 22nd, and you'll see that notation in the margin at the bottom of the top page. The first chart up at the top there is the visitors that we've received. This is a five-year comparison of month over month for year over year since 2009. I know you're probably accustomed to seeing this data. You can see in the month comparisons there, probably March was the month that we were down the most in terms of just pure visitor foot traffic. May was a pretty good month in terms of being up over last year. And then June, we're about 15% up. Overall, on the year, I think we're going to reach the break-even point pretty soon and be heading into, hopefully, we hope, higher numbers in the months that come. And when it comes to group tour visitors, you can see 2012 compared to 2013 at the bottom of that chart. We had, for instance, in June of 2013, we sold $680 in passports, $2220 in individual passports, and then we had group tour sales and general sales. The general sales are the St. Genevieve flags, the water, Gatorade, those kinds of little supplies that we carry down there. If you'll turn to the next page, we try to track, it's called sample because it is a sampling that actually Sue helps us put together of several of the downtown restaurants and several of the downtown shops. So the first chart that you'll see here is just a month-to-month comparison and comparing over the last four years, just for a sampling of restaurants in terms of their sales tax turned in. So they don't always turn it in exactly on the month. Sometimes they turn it in in the next month, so some of these fluctuate, but it's a pretty good measure of how we're doing on the year. If you look at the 2012 column versus the 2013 column, you can see that, for instance, May in 2012 was a pretty strong month. We had 3,721. May in 2013 dropped down to 3,168. So we're down just a little bit, but if you look at the year-to-date difference, we had a pretty strong January and a pretty strong April, so we're actually at a positive 2% on the year-to-date. And we certainly hope that we will continue to see strong trends. But look at the bars at the top. You can see right here, the July bar was a real spike last year, apparently with the heat. Who knows? Maybe people were inside more and eating and drinking more. We don't know. But July was a pretty strong month, so we're going to have some pretty heavy numbers to go against there, 4,307. And this is, again, just the restaurants. If you turn to the next page, you should have the shops. This is a sampling of downtown shops and the sales tax that they are collecting and reporting. So you can see that, for instance, May of 2012 was, again, extremely strong, and May of this year was probably more in keeping with previous years, but certainly not to the extent that May 2012 was. So May was down 57% for month over month between 2012 and 2013. The month of June was down about half that much, about 34%. And so we hope that, moving forward, if you look at July, for instance, for whatever reason, the shops were kind of flat between June and July last year. And then August, we should pick up. September, pretty strong. October, stronger. And then November and December were pretty flat. So we're certainly hoping, I'm working extensively with the shops and business owners downtown, especially on advertising and how they can kind of join forces and be grouped under the banner of St. Genevieve's advertising. I'm trying to, and really with Bev and Jack Dunsey have really taken the lion's share of the lead in this. They started this process probably in May with a strong ad in the Bellevue News-Democrat. This past month, we had several ads, and you may have seen those with an article about Jour de Fête, and then about nine advertisers below that. So those will be running from now until Jour de Fête in southern Illinois in several communities. And then we're going into Cape Girardeau and some of the other communities in the region. Again, this is advertising that we are doing independently of the advertising that we do through the Co-op Marketing Grant, because those dollars are kind of predetermined in larger magazines, AAA, Traveler, and those kinds of things. So if you turn to the next page, this is just to show you the source that this data comes from. And again, I'd like to thank Sue for helping pull all this together and make sense of it. Finally, the last page there is a sample letter. This one happens to be to Jason Smith. On Sunday of Jour de Fête weekend, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, we will have a dedication of Gage Park and a commemoration of 20 years since the 1993 flood. So a lot of people are working very hard to pull together this event commemorating the flood and the progress that's been made in St. Genevieve since that flood. And in particular, there will be a new park space dedicated during the course of that weekend, and it's going to be called Gage Park. It's going to be down on North Main Street. Everyone knows where the telephone pole is with the river levels on it. That little green space just to the east there is where Gage Park will be. And the St. Genevieve Downtown Renewal Program has really taken the lead in concepting both this park and the event, and the city has signed on. And we've invited a few VIPs. You never know how many VIPs will show up, but we're hopeful that we have some of our state and regional legislators here with us. And certainly, we're making every effort to reach out to some of those who are very instrumental in the flood relief efforts here in the community, too. So if anyone has any questions, we're going to be announcing that in several formats, that event on August 11th, Sunday. There's also to be a movie shown that evening, if everything works out. Bill Nager is in the process of revising his 1993 flood video, or St. Genevieve's response to the flood, digitizing it and preparing to show it up at the New Performing Arts Center at St. John High School. So if that goes according to plan, then that will be screened that night at 7 o'clock. They're not sure on the time yet, but as soon as we know that for sure, we'll have an announcement about it. And thank you for those of you who have come down to visit me at the Welcome Center. You're always welcome down there, and if you ever want to come down and help us out with anything, we're always happy to take volunteers in any shape or form. So with that, that's my report.
Thanks. Dave's here. If anybody... See Dave's report in the packet? Good evening.
Bob, Dave's standing there. Are you going to speak?
Yo, you go ahead.
Ms. Roth has visited us from time to time, as you recall, because of water in her basement. Last week, we borrowed a fire truck and put the fire hose on her roof to see what was happening, because we just couldn't conceive that that much water could get in her basement when we had just minor rains. The water came off of her roof and went into her gutters and quickly overspilled the gutters, going down to this low spot by her basement and obviously finding its way immediately into her basement because she was sitting down there and came up and said, water's coming in from our hosing down her roof. So we did that because the basement waterproofing was going to be $5,000. And she wasn't real happy with the idea of not solving the problem, just accommodating it with this interior drain. From that effort, and pursuant to your direction to solve the problem, we removed the walkway that was there, and as I have said in the past, I have learned in two and a half years, you should never be surprised what you find when you dig a hole in St. Genevieve. We found a sidewalk below the sidewalk. And then below the sidewalk, we found a pipe that nobody knows what is. It looks like a gas line or something. But Dave and the crew got it all done, got it repoured, sloped it to drain away from the foundation. I think she probably needs to do some gutter work because it shouldn't function the way it did, because everything was clean. It wasn't that it was clogged up. It's just the pitch of the gutters too much, and all the water gets to the low end too quickly and it overflows. But cross your fingers, it is our hope and expectation that what we did yesterday and today has solved the problem.
I'm almost sure it's going to solve the problem. Right where, like Martin said, right where the water was running off the sidewalk, was running right down that little dirt area, and they kept having to fill the hole up. And once they filled the hole up, then it kept sinking. And when we dug that out, we found where it was going. It was the roots running right into her foundation, so the water was just following that.
What did we do, though, to trigger it when we did the, when we did the project? Did we raise a level somewhere and force that to be a low spot?
I'm thinking what happened is that it disturbed the soil and loosened it up, and then it was running into them old pipes, because the old pipes had holes in them all over the place, you know, because they separated. And it was relieving the pressure. Well, whenever they filled it up, then the water had nowhere to go but, you know, to the weakest place, and it was right in her basement. So it's supposed to rain possibly Friday, and I hope we get a phone call saying it's fixed.
Good deal. That'd be great.
As you can see on my report, it's basically the same as the last couple of months. We've been weed-eating and patching streets and doing concrete work and anything else that comes up. Next couple of weeks, we'll be working with Sandra a lot on Jour de Fête stuff. And whatever else you guys come up with. One book.
Did we ever fix that for Mrs. Akins? Did we ever fix her?
Oh, I mean, her.
Her lip on the driveway and then her...
We haven't done anything. I mean, it's APA compliant, and the ramp is 50 feet down.
Did you ever get the grate?
What grate?
For the box?
There's a grate on the, on that inlet, by the side of her house?
Yeah.
Yeah. The grate's on there.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
We don't think there's anything we can do to the...
Well, she was just so...
To the lip. We could, what we would have to do is tear out a section of the sidewalk.
Should we just pour it?
And we just pour it and repour it with a ramp. It's the easiest thing to do. Try and figure out some way to fill in that little crack that'll stay there, I mean, that little crack to the little lip is just impractical.
Why couldn't you just grind it off a little bit, the slope?
Yeah, for fear that the water, the reason it's there is to keep the water from migrating up her driveway. We could do that.
But you got to drain it right there.
Yeah, it said, I don't know that it would cause a problem, but that's the reason why they put those on there. I just want to do something, didn't have to do something else because it caused a problem. But, you know, you're talking, again, if you'd like for us to do it, it's probably $100 fixed.
What, to grind it or what?
No, to take out the slab and repour it.
I don't understand why you'd take it out. Why wouldn't you just grind a little bit there and just...
Well, we could try that.
Because it's not only slope.
Well, because we don't want to create... I'll talk to him tomorrow. We'd have to grind it out three feet wide, I guess.
Yeah.
Just for the, for the scooter or whatever. Is that what he uses, like a little mini?
We were going to, we were going to go down to the area where that drain is on the west end of her house, west side, and then put a little ramp there so if water did work up, it'd just go down in that drain.
Any questions on the fire chief's report?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably all the same one.
Yeah, on the fire tags.
The fire tags.
Yeah.
Non-fee fire tags.
What's happened?
37.
What have we done with that?
We left a fire tag collector.
What we've ever done is just sent them out a don't-wink notice saying that if they don't pay it within so many days, they're going to have to reinstate as a new member and pay double the fine, or double the fee. And we've gotten no response from those 37 people.
What do we do after that?
Yeah. It's up to you.
Well, if they don't have a fire tag, we don't... Well, if they don't have a fire tag, we don't theoretically, don't fight their fire.
Yeah.
Don't you charge them if you fight their fire?
Yes. In the past, when you had someone that's delinquent like that, and you said you were going to double the fine, did anybody ever come back in? No, they just let it go?
So that's not an effective...
If we charge someone for firing their fire, does their insurance company pay us? Or is that just as fee, as futile, futile as...
I thought your insurance company required you to have a fire tag if you were needing...
Is there any mechanism where we can fine them?
No.
Should there be a mechanism where we can fine them?
Whether outside of our jurisdiction.
Charge them however much an hour, and I think that's, I know that's set somewhere. I mean, it's $500 an hour or something for a truck. Depends on how many trucks you have there and whatever. But, and I don't know if that's covered by your insurance or not, but it's a pretty, it's a pretty hefty fee if they do show up and fight fire.
Does that go... The fire tag and the EMS are completely separate, right?
These 37 people are just getting...
It's just nothing new. It happens every year like that.
Not that right, too? About that many don't pay?
Yes.
Is it the same people?
Yes. Occasionally, there's somebody that's surprising, but yes.
They're just taking the gamble.
So essentially, there's nothing we can do and...
How much is a fire tag?
$50 for residential on 75, commercial or farm. And then if you're within that 100 feet...
1,000 feet in.
You got any thoughts on this, Frank?
The whole fire tag issue probably ought to be reviewed by you folks. I would say study session or something. But if you wanted to discuss options, it probably ought to be something you guys kick around, a study session before you scare people on TV. But there are some things that you could look at. Part of the problem is the whole process of establishing those fire tag amounts are not passing necessarily across in front of you. That's what, I think that whole process of how do we do that, and how do you folks get a chance to look at it at least, needs probably an ordinance.
Well, we did that, not too many years ago, when we changed it, when we added the, when we, well, I guess when we got the ISO 4 and added that extra increment in there for the people that could qualify for that if they were within 1,000 or 1,500 feet of a fire hydrant, we added a different level, and they pay $100, right?
Right.
So I know that that was a discussion on the whole fire tag issue with this board.
Well, I guess what I'm talking about is the, that's the only time I remember in the history of my being the city attorney that it was brought to you to discuss. But maybe it has. The whole idea of how much should it be, and how do we work with other fire departments in the community to not disrupt what's going on? And how do you set fire tag fees so that you are at least encouraging people to come into your city? And looking at the whole idea of how do you allocate the cost of providing fire department services outside of your city, is the fire tag method even adequate? So, yes, there are some things, but it will require you folks to study it, and Martin to study it, and I think you'll probably need an ordinance if you want to do something with it.
And none of these people fall in other fire tag?
See, what happens, you know, we're a municipal volunteer fire department. And the other fire departments are as, you know, they have their own little democracy inside of their volunteer fire department. They are in general, they're associations, they're not political subdivisions, and they get 100% of their money pretty much from fire tags. So what you folks do is, because it's within a city, you're paying for a lot of the operation with city dollars. And we are, because we have cooperative agreements to assist fire departments out in the outlying areas, you are using your equipment, if necessary, to supplement what they have, which isn't unfair necessarily, but that whole, looking at that whole operation is where you would potentially find some options.
Aside from the mutual aid, which is obviously a good thing for everybody, don't we serve certain rural fire departments, certain rural residents, because we can respond more quickly, even though they are not in...
The state statute actually envisions that every county would, all the fire departments would sit down and basically determine what territories they would serve. And that's supposed to be a map filed with the county, and then the county sends it up to the state, to the state, okay? I have not been aware that that's been happening.
It has not been happening. It did happen at least once.
It probably did.
I found the map.
It's sort of, I guess, a compliment to how well the different fire departments get along and they get it done, but it's my opinion that the city's coverage area ought to come before you, that you should prove what you're going to serve and not serve. But on the other side of the coin, all of these people are volunteers. So making it work and protecting the city's tax dollars is going to require some appreciation for what you're dealing with, but you do have the right and probably the duty to get a little bit more involved in that.
I guess my question is, how do we get these 37 people to pay their 50 bucks?
Well, they are volunteer fire tags, okay?
So they don't have to?
No.
And there's nothing we can do about it?
Well...
Today.
Today, right. You don't have any tools to do that, because they're outside the city limits.
Well, they got, they've got...
We just charge them.
Double charge if they don't get it paid by a certain date.
We'll schedule a work session on this after we adopt the budget.
Yeah, they just have the money.
If they do come in after that notice has been sent out, yes, they have to pay double.
Double. That's the only thing we have.
Give them amnesty for 60 days, and after that, discharge the daylights out of them if we have to go help.
I think that is part of it, if they do. But remember, though, in those maps, the map is out there, or it is, but I mean, but remember that there is no, you get the wrong idea that there's like not a gap between St. Genevieve and St. Mary's or St. Genevieve and Zell. All those people are either covered by St. Genevieve or St. Mary's, and we butt up against everybody, so they are all being covered by somebody. Okay. Eric, you're next.
Anybody have any questions? We have a position that opened up this week. Our newest hire, Drew Spears, whom I had extremely high hopes for, decided that it probably wasn't the career path for him, and he's decided to move on to other things. It's kind of unexpected, actually, it's very unexpected. And as mentioned in my report, the, I have another officer that will be out probably for an extended sick leave for some health reasons. So definitely operating shorthanded right now. There was, in addition, somewhat to the department without funding from the city, the school resource officer has been decided and put into effect at the school. It's a female from St. Francis County. She worked for the Division of Family Services for several years. She also has some law enforcement experience in South Carolina, where she worked in a city comparable to Cape for about three years. She is Missouri Post certified, and she has carried a commission in Missouri for the last few years. So she will be commissioned through our department, so she will have arrest powers in our city. She will be reporting officer for any incidents that happen at the school. And she will also be on the school grounds, both here and Bloomsdale, at the school's discretion through the school year. She will be made available to us during the summer for the fair, Juror Fett, things like that, but, you know, she will have some other obligations at the school during that time. Typically, that's when a school resource officer will utilize their vacation time and get caught up on the trainings that they're required to have for that time. But we will have an additional officer who will essentially be a full-time officer, but at no expense to us, so that will be a good thing. We're going to start training her on August 1st. I'm sorry?
Is she paid for by the school board?
The school, yes, the school district pays her. She will, my understanding is she will not be commissioned through the county at this time, just because of some dual commissioning issues. Should something happen at Bloomsdale that would require a report, she will just coordinate that with the Sheriff's Department, and they'll handle that as they normally would. But I'm excited. I think she'll be a good fit, and I think she'll work out very well. Her name is Christina Clark, if I didn't mention that already. And I will try to have her here maybe for the next meeting to introduce you guys, although she's not a city employee, just so you guys can become familiar and the citizens can become familiar with her. So I think that's about everything, personnel issues. I believe so, yes. I think they're going to send up a couple of officers and maybe some apparatus for that. They have a side-by-side UTV that they may make available to us.
Do you still have the Explorer?
That was definitely about a year ago, due to lack of interest and just lack of time and support, so. And maybe something we'll revisit in the future, but we do have a couple of the members that were on the Explorers that have offered to help with some of the tasks that they did last year. I think we'll probably be very limited on how we can actually use them without the insurance coverage that we have through the Boy Scouts. But it is, it is no longer a place right now. We do still have our reserve program, and we utilize our reserve officers during Juror Fett also.
How many do we have?
Of course, six right now, as far as active reserves. So...
Are they all open, boy?
I don't know with any of, we haven't had an applicant.
County?
No. Some of them live in St. Francis County, some of them, one lives up at the north end, but he had some training issues and wasn't, they're required to keep up with the minimum training, same as any other officer, and he had some issues with his job, being able to coordinate that, so we're not going to be able to utilize him. But everybody that's kept up on their continuing education will be made available.
How long is June on the board?
A month or less.
I don't, I don't even know that we could, or if we could even talk about this sometime, about putting something in place. I know it's expensive to hire someone new. You've got lots of things that you go through to get them hired.
For decades.
Yes. There's, is there some way that we can put something in place that would, if they're not there by X number of days, if they don't stay for X number of days, that they're responsible for some of that?
My understanding is, we've looked at that, some departments have done it in the past, it is a binding contract. If for some reason they wash out and we don't want to retain them during that time, you know, we're under the same obligation that they are as far as staying. You know, obviously, we're talking more of a monetary issue here, but if you're requiring them to be here for a certain amount of time before they leave with some negative consequences on their part, I believe, and this would be more of a legal question probably for Frank, but my understanding is that that's kind of a two-way street.
Not just a police officer, could be any.
I don't know that we even enter into a written contract with anyone at this time.
It's been substantially reduced in number of applicants as well.
But the applicants that you get hopefully would be more dedicated, so maybe the ones that you're reducing. I see both sides of the coin, and until now, it hasn't really been too big an issue. And again, I mean, with, in this particular case, if, I'm glad that it happened now rather than when I would have to schedule somebody else to cover his shift. He was still in a training period, and, you know, right now, with the exception of the expense of putting into the fire, you know, it's not going to take tremendous toll on our resources to fill that void at this point, so.
It's not an issue.
It's a shame, and like I said, I really had some high hopes for him, and I wish he would have stuck around for a while.
The other side, the other side of that, especially in that position, I'd hate for somebody to stay just because they had to, especially in that job.
It's meant their timeframe is actually long.
Right.
And those things rarely are very beneficial.
Yeah, and there's a lot of reasons for somebody to leave, whether it be pay or just an overall fear of the job or inadequacy in the job, so.
This hasn't happened often. It hasn't happened often.
No, and like I said, it hasn't been an issue until now, but it is a considerable issue with a limited budget, a limited uniform budget, limited, you know, the resources that we put into training, but there again, it has as many benefits as it does detriments at this point, so.
Wouldn't that return to duty for our folks that are out now with medical issues?
I don't know how much I can get into in the public.
You're looking...
We, the board passed a policy sometime back requiring them to reexamine after a certain amount of sick days or leave time, so that would certainly be adhered to as far as getting into specifics on where they're at. Otherwise, I probably won't comment on the public one, but I'd be happy to address that when the time is right. But we're certainly going to adhere to the policies that this board has established as far as having them reexamined before coming back, but...
Who are optimistic it's going to be soon, though?
Possibly.
You looking to hire new people?
For the one opening that we have, you know, obviously, we're going to hold out for the other two positions that, you know, however we can help those officers, we're certainly going to do that. And I would assume, you know, it would be in agreement with this board and your philosophies, but, you know, both of them have served the community well, and are definitely in a time of need right now, so I, as an administrator, would want to help them as much as we can.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any committee reports? Mark kind of covered the tree committee, and I don't know that they're going to really have to meet again. Maybe once we get some...
Once we get the final...
Contact the property owners to see who let us do what.
Correct.
Species from the consultants, you know, I can, didn't have a meeting to prepare a final report that we'll present to the board.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else?
I've got a Juror Fett song track.
Good.
About the same as last year.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, minutes from July 11th.
May be a correction on the first page under approval of the agenda. Motion by Alderwoman Zerwick, seconded by Alderman John Zerwick, which he's not really an Alderman, but maybe John Stevie?
Probably, yeah. Try that, sir. Move through with the changes. Okay, a motion made, second with the corrections. All in favor? Aye. Proposed. An actual report for June?
Prove, prove.
Second. Okay. Tom, you have some questions?
Just a few quick questions. What'd we pay the Old DuPont Museum 981 dollars for?
Tours.
Passport. We collect the money selling the passports, then we...
Oh, reimburse it. How about the Church of St. Genevieve? Same thing. Pepsi-Cola.
Well, that's purchasing the inventory that she resells.
Okay. Show me shop. 25 bucks.
How much was it?
Which department was that, Tom? 28, 800. I guess that's a GL number, or I don't know what. I guess that's a GL number, or I don't know what the.
Check number.
Did you send it to family, yes, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a few.
It was a card.
Memorial. How about the bottom line, I'm there, the workforce employment group?
That is our summer help.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Thank you. Resolution 2013-29, a resolution appointing Robert J. Mueller to the St. Genevieve Tourism Tax Commission.
I move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Resolution 2013-30, a resolution reappointing Frank Roth to the St. Genevieve Landmarks Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Thank you. New business, bill number 3930, first reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve official year 2013 budget relating to the Park Fund Number 20.
This one requires some explanation. Tom Piku went part-time, as you recall, and as a consequence, we ended up with more funds and personnel than we needed to pay personnel. So what we're asking here is to move $5,000 out of personnel and into operations, which we then spend for the complete removal of the bath, the pool house. We have a bid, we have three bids actually, and one of the bids is under $5,000, so we can get it done for that. Move approval.
Second. So we couldn't have done it with our backhoe?
It, I'm informed that we could not do it with our backhoe. And it has to do with removing the roof system. There's no safe way to do it, but.
I just had an individual that worked at a quarry, and he said he could have taken a backhoe, and he'd been more than happy to take our backhoe and get rid of it all. I think for less than $5,000, I agree with you, John, I sincerely agree with you there. But for less than $5,000 to relieve ourselves of the liability of our employees, I'm all for five thousand bucks. I think the initial number was tossed around was over $20,000.
I have one bid for 18,000.
Yeah, and that was just.
I have a bid for $9,000, and I have a bid for 40s.
Are they hauling it off and everything, or just dropping?
No, they're hauling it, it's removal and clean up, clean up the site.
You have a discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed.
Do we need to get going on this?
Yes.
I'd move for a second reading.
Second to us.
Okay, all in favor of second reading?
Aye.
Proposed? Okay, bill number 3930, second reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve official year 2013 budget relating to the Park Fund Number 20.
Move approval.
Second.
Alderwoman Linda Brumfield. Alderman Oakenfus.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderwoman Zerwick.
Yes.
Alderman Couch.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes, one absent. Bill number 3930 now becomes ordinance number 3871.
Thank you. Bill number 3931, first reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve official year 2013 budget relating to the General Fund Number 10, Department Number 16, Police. And this is to, this is according to our auditors, that we have to classify the capital lease, the full dollar amount of police vehicles, and that is what this change is.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Okay, thank you. Bill number 3932, first reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve official year 2013 budget relating to the General Fund, Department 14, Building. And this is to accept the historic preservation grant that we got.
For the window works out.
Yeah.
Move approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Thank you. Bill number 3933, first reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve official year 2013 budget relating to the Debt Service Fund Budget Number 50. And this is basically, our TIF revenues were up, so we had to pay more in capital sales tax into the TIF, and then UMB Bank increased their charges by 3%.
Move approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Thank you. Bill number 3934, first reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve official year 2013 budget relating to the General Fund Number 10, Department Number 13, Administration. And this was the sign grant that we needed to acknowledge.
Move approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Okay, thank you. We're down to the public comments. Anybody in the audience like to address the board? Yes, sir. Ed Lutrell.
Take much of your time. My name's Ed Lutrell, I live at 399 Moore Valley, St. Genevieve Street. I'm a member of the Park Board and I'm Commissioner of Landmarks. A few months ago, four months ago, around April, it was brought to my attention by a contract, it was very irritated that somebody put vinyl windows in a home, and he wanted to know how they got away with it. There were some homes coming up for sale in St. Jen, and he did some bidding on them, and he found out that a window replacement wouldn't be allowed, or it would be hard to get. So he brought it to my attention, and I missed a few meetings at Landmarks, so the KC Hall was applying for a certificate of appropriateness, and I'm involved with the construction, so I just kind of stayed out. And I told him I might have missed it when he got his approval, but the only way he could do it in the area of this home was, is to get an approval. I left in your mailboxes, kind of as sheets, giving the facts, so I said, I'll look into it. Well, I found out he didn't get certificate of appropriateness, and so I brought it up to Planning and Zoning, Brenda Sloss, and she said, well, she needed somebody, the installer, to give her all the facts. So I got a wholly installer, and he said, yeah, yeah, no problem. So he gave her the facts, and he told her that he installed windows in his residence, the person in question's residence, on Washington Street, vinyl windows. So I ran into another contractor that got mad, and then there's a homeowner that lives right across the street from me, and they got very irritated. They kind of lost their house over this issue. They got mad and left town, and, you know, over this issue. So I told him, you know, I'll do what I can do, so I brought it up at Landmarks, as you can tell, it was about four months ago, when I brought it up to our planning and zoning lady, what we could do, and I called, talked to my Alderman, and one of them said, well, we're having a meeting tonight, Ed, get it in our mailbox and bring it to their attention. So I just brought it to your attention, so you'll be aware that we do have a violation. This isn't just a homeowner that's trying to do better by saving his economical heating bill, trying to make the house more heatable. This is a contractor that's buying our houses in the historic district and putting vinyl windows in. I mean, that's kind of what, a little bit what happened to our north end of town, where we lost some beautiful historical homes, and we have incidences where there was, one residential guy brought to court over this. And I think four months is enough, so I just wanted to bring it to your attention, maybe you can keep an eye on it, maybe you can kick it around. One thing I would like to say is, as a Commissioner of Landmarks, my personal feeling is, I would have accepted, I would have voted yes for vinyl windows in this one house, he did. But that's, now that's not the question. He didn't go through the format. He came and he's, when I was there, he received two certificates of approval, so he knows the format. This individual knows what it takes, and I just think we need to watch and respect the people that come in nervous, upset, financially strapped, trying to jump through our hoops of Landmarks, and then we have somebody that blatantly does it.
Ed, what are you saying, that somebody's broken the ordinance and want to take care of it?
No, I don't like how long it's taking, and tonight it'll be off my shoulders, because I, you know, I told him that I'll bring it to the, you know, because it would probably end up with you guys anyway, so maybe you can watch it, and maybe you can let it go six, eight months, maybe three years before something's done. At least we know something's going to be done, you know. I left what it says in our guidebook, what needs to be done. I don't think it needs to be like this other individual we had in town that kind of hurt you, but due to respect for all these people that come in here about fences and sheds, and we sit here and aren't you lazy on there, she's familiar with it. Due to respect for them, when we do catch somebody that's blatantly wrong, we do something. You know, that's all I'm here for. Any questions?
Honestly, I have no idea what you're just talking about.
Okay, what do you need to know? What do you have to change?
Contractors, the whole thing. What is, what are you trying to tell us? That somebody's not following the ordinance and that something needs to be done about it? Okay. And Martin and Art and the City Hall, who's responsible for that?
Brenda is handling this case, and she'll be glad to address it, any questions you have?
No, Paul's just being aggressive on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it going to be addressed like Mr. Fowler's, or how's it going?
I said you have, I said you copy what, how we would address it, you know.
Alderman, the fact that Tom doesn't need to speak to her doesn't mean you can't ask Brenda questions, if you'd like for her to come forward.
Yeah, I'd like to know.
Yeah. Get on with it.
I'm sorry, what was your question?
Is it going to be followed the same way as Mr. Fowler's?
Mr. Fowler's case was slightly different, but it has been addressed.
Wait, wait, how can be slightly different?
Mr. Fowler was caught in the act and given a stop port order on that one, that automatically citation was issued with the stop port order. This is an after the fact that we needed to find out what happened with the procedures that he did it and that kind of thing. But he has been given a notice of violation and been requested to submit an application for certificate of appropriateness and a bill for it, and he has applied both, and he will be on the next Landmarks meeting.
But does he, does he get fined because he went?
That is up to Landmarks whether or not they do not like what he did or what he says or what's.
The fine, the fine is assessed by the judge.
Right, and then they will.
That's only if there's an actual prosecution in municipal court. The Landmarks Commission doesn't have any power to fine anybody. So I guess my next question is, was Mr. Fowler fined?
No.
No fines?
No, he was not.
So who, who, what's across the mechanism if this is a current situation? If, who decides if this prosecution should occur to?
When does it go to?
I think, I think the way we do it is on a case-by-case basis, and if, if it's an after-the-fact application, we let the process work, we let the Landmarks Commission lecture and express disapproval and basically treat people on a case-by-case basis. If they don't, if they snub the process, then they will get prosecuted in municipal court. So that would be Brenda bringing that to Martin, Martin bringing it to you, or? Brenda sent me, Brenda would send me something that needs prosecution. How does that process work?
If he goes upon Landmarks, they'll say, okay, it's fine. I'm here to respect the people that did it the way they should have. If you read what I sent you out of our handbook, it doesn't say anything about, oh, he did it and didn't get caught, now we're going to give him a chance to come back and see if it's approved. That, that takes the basis of Landmarks all the way. Everybody will just do it, some will get caught, some won't. We got a procedure. He knew the procedure, it's been here before. Mr. Fowler's never come to for that. And it is different, he was caught in the process, so luckily, they stopped him now. He was brought forward to speak and all that, but he didn't go through, he barely went through Landmarks then. You know, they didn't approve it because it was next to the Old DuPont house. You know, but like I said, you know, just because they'll say, yeah, it's fine, that isn't, that isn't what I'm here for. I'm here for because he didn't go through the procedure, if you understand what I'm trying to say. And it says right there, if anything's done without a certificate of appropriateness, this is what you'll, the consequence you'll pay. And I'm not looking for any money, any trouble, I just think when you stop a contractor before he gets into it, because I think this is the third house, you know, there's two houses now he put vinyl windows in without a certificate of appropriateness. He's working on some more, he does a beautiful job, I mean, but I think he needs to be set back and realize that we have procedures, not after the fact, you know, that's what I'm trying to say. I don't want to slide this by letting him go back to Landmarks and a few friends or a few people say, oh, I would have went to Landmarks. I want to say it's ripped plain right there, and he knew, so that's all, all I got to say.
I would also like to add that he understood what the procedures were, and he did come in and talk to me about the procedures prior to him changing out the windows. He, and I always said partly of that was my fault, and some is understanding on his part, so I do not feel that it was a case of him blatantly sidestepping the law.
As I understood the sequence of events, he said, what do you think Landmarks will do with this?
Right.
And you said, as Mr. Lutrell just said, well, given the setting and where it is, you know, they might be able to, this one could be accepted, and he heard you say it was accepted.
It was, he wasn't changing out original windows, he was changing out replacement windows, and just the sash. But Eddie's correct, he should have gone to Landmarks for that. But that was, that's correct, that was not his.
Stop it. Hey.
Wait a minute, we're going to let, we're going to let Landmarks, let's let this go through Landmarks and then come back to here, and then we'll see what Landmarks comes up with.
They're going to come back if they deny any one of the people. And I would, I would also add that I kind of view Brenda as sort of like law enforcement, that she's, her job is to seek compliance, just as a law enforcement officer is, so she, she's going to exercise some discretion on whether she's going to refer it to me or not. If she feels that it is an intentional violation, she'll refer it to me and it'll get prosecuted, but I don't make that call. I let Brenda have some discretion on how she enforces that ordinance. In the, in the main part, we're looking for compliance. As Mr. Lutrell said, we're not necessarily trying to collect money, but you do have to acknowledge that if you pull somebody over on a speeding ticket and they say, I'm going to speed anytime I want to, well, they're going to get a ticket. And so Brenda will refer if she feels it's appropriate.
Anybody else? Comments? Any other public comments? Okay, there are other business, we have a request for a certificate of appropriateness from Sylvanas Products Incorporated for the demolition of a wooden outbuilding located on the parking lot at 40 Merchant Street. And this was brought before Landmarks and they approved it.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Thank you. And we have a request of a certificate of appropriateness from Union Pacific Railroad for the demolition of a silo and metal shed located at 1015 North Main Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Thank you. And we have a request from Charlestown Winery for a temporary liquor license for the juror fee, juror fed, August 10th and 11th, 2013.
Moved to approve.
Your packet, you had Fowler, but it was substituted with Charlestown, same, same application.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed?
What's the time on the, I'm not posing, but what's the time of, began here, it's August 10th, 10? Mine's always got to be.
6:00 p.m. The juror fed hours are 10 to 6 on Saturday and 10 to 4 on Sunday. What are they putting on the?
It's 10 to 10 on, 10 to 10 on the 10th and 10 to 6 on the other.
It says below it, on the 11th, 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., that's Sunday.
But aren't the, your garden's allowed to stay open until 8?
Yeah. That's why the wives have to stay open.
So that should read 10 to 8?
So, it should be...
Should be 10 to 8.
10 to 10, that's what I have.
Put the direction.
Okay.
Juridifet, 10 to 6.
The traffic hours with some of the social events here.
Saturday should be 10 to 8.
Okay, if nobody has anything else?
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for watching Channel 798.
Thank you for watching Channel 798.
Hi, thank you very much for watching Channel 798.